Right, good evening everyone. Can I just welcome, can I welcome everybody to the Cabinet meeting? And I'd like to remind everyone this is being streamed live. Can I first of all remind people to switch off their videos and their microphones until you come to speak? There are two people who are currently broadcasting in addition to myself. Thank you. This is being streamed live on our website. Hi. Right. Sorry, there I am. And I'm going to apologise in advance, this is the first meeting I've ever chaired online. We're all, we're all learning. So, here we go. This meeting is being broadcast via our website and being recorded. And we're all getting used to this, this is new to all of us. And things won't go as smoothly as meetings that were held in person. So I hope everyone taking part and observing will bear with us. We appear to have more people present than we usually have in the building, so that's quite a good thing. So first of all, a few notes about how these meetings should work. First of all, as I just said, can I remind people to turn off their video? And hopefully, everyone taking part, particularly councillors, are taking part from somewhere where they won't be disturbed or distracted. Please, as I said, turn off your audio and your video. Please use the, those who are taking part in the meeting, please use the chat box and put an H in the chat box and I will call you to speak at the appropriate time. All contributions to meetings, as this meeting and any meeting should come through the chair. And please remember to turn on your video and your audio when I call you to speak and then turn it off afterwards. Any councillor with an interest in any item should use the, should, sorry, any councillor with any interest should declare the items, their interest in those items and not take part in the subject. When it comes to a decision or any of the recommendations or motions before us, I will ask for the support, obviously, at Cabinet meetings, only Cabinet members can vote. And I will take it that everyone has agreed unless they say so. If we lose the live stream on the website, we will adjourn for 10 minutes and hopefully fix it. And if we can't, we'll adjourn the meeting until a future date. Just to clarify, I've already got two queries. We're not using the hand raising function because it doesn't work on everybody's devices. And so that's, so we're not going to use that. Let me just move on to the opening part of the agenda. Just before I do so, councillor, I'm going, this is unusual, but councillor Steele has asked to speak. So councillor Steele, is your question about how we organise this meeting?
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I thought you got to declarations of interest. When you get to that, I'd like to make a declaration of interest, please.
Sure, okay, thank you. Right. Moving on to the agenda, yeah, hopefully everyone's got a copy of the agenda, those members of the public who are watching, it's on the website. So first of all, item one is attendance and apologies. Mr Mayfield?
Yes, thank you Chair. Those councillors showing as present at the meeting are yourself, councillor Robinson, Marie Goldman, Chris Davidson, Mike McCrory and Rose Moore, they're all the members of the Cabinet. The Cabinet deputy showing as present, our councillor's bracket, Dan Clark, Anne Davidson, Smita Rajesh and Chloe Tron. And we have a number of opposition spokespeople also present. They are councillors Bentley, Chambers, Paul Clark, Daiden, Dobson, Gulliver, Highland, Massey, Porter, Raven, Roberts, Sizmi, Steele, Watson and Whitehead. And councillor Lee is also shown as present. We've had apologies from just one person, councillor Galley, who's one of the opposition spokespeople. There are a number of officers also present, Nick Evely, the Chief Executive, Lorraine Brown, the Legal and Democratic Services Manager, and Stuart Graham, the Economic Development Manager, besides myself, Brian Mayfield, the Democratic Services Manager. And also a number of officers also present who can be called upon to speak if necessary and they will introduce themselves if they are asked to do so. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayfield. So moving on, item two, declarations of interest, councillor Steele?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I just want to declare a conflict of interest on item 6.1. It's a non pecuniary interest. I happen to be a member of the Riverside Gym and I think it would be appropriate for me not to take part in that part of the meeting, if that's okay.
Okay, thank you. Right, moving on, just to remind you to turn off your video. Councillor Steele, yeah, thanks. Item three, so that the minutes of the meeting on the 3rd of March, is everyone content, members of the Cabinet, that I should sign those as a correct record?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you very much.
Great.
Okay. All right, that's good. We all sign those on a different occasion. Right, thank you. So moving on, now we, public question time relating to items on the agenda now. We, we had, we, there was a suggestion, we have someone to ask a question about item six, but they're not able to be present. And obviously councillor Moore will deal with that issue fully when we get to it. Also, the other questions received by the deadline both relate to the item coming up later on the agenda at 7.3, Tyndale Square. So that the meeting doesn't seem disjointed, I propose to take both those questions from Dr Beckley and Mr Noble. If I can, I'll take those questions before that item starts. And then councillor McCrory will respond to the questions before he moves on to present his report. I think if we do it that way, we'll keep the whole, all the subjects at the same part of the agenda and I think that it will then come across better. I hope Dr Beckley and Mr Noble are happy with that. So you can stand easy for now and wait for us to get through the next couple of items. Okay, so now it's item five, which is for councillors who aren't members of the Cabinet to ask questions on matters for which the Cabinet is responsible. So I have, first hand up is from councillor Bentley. Do I have any other opposition spokespeople or other non-Cabinet members wanting to ask any questions? No? Okay, all right, thank you. Keith, aha, councillor Highland and councillor Dobson noted, thank you. And yes, councillor Daiden, if I bring you in last councillor Daiden, then that will move swiftly on to the item six, I hope that makes sense. So councillors Bentley, Highland, Dobson first. Thank you councillor Bentley.
Yeah, I'd like to ask about the car park charges and the car parks.
Yeah.
Are we planning to reintroduce car park charges? When are we doing that or are they still, are they ongoing? And will key workers be given exemptions until a future date?
Okay, is that just, you just have the one question, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks councillor Bentley. Is councillor McCrory able to come in?
Yes, thank you Chair. Well, in fact councillor Bentley, thank you for your question. The charges were reintroduced on the 1st of June, I believe, or maybe a little bit earlier than that. There was some discretion allowed, but yes, we are charging already, the multi-stories are open as well, they have social distancing measured out, there's regular sanitising of all the touchable surfaces and there's only one household allowed in the lift at each, each time it is opened. But yes, the point of your question, yes, car park charges are, have already been reintroduced and there are no plans for key workers' exemptions.
And do you quickly want to come back councillor Bentley?
Yeah, I'm just wondering why our councillors decided differently to a lot of other councils with regards to key worker exemptions. A lot of councils are actually maintaining those, bearing in mind that we are still in a sort of semi-lockdown situation with social distancing and everything else and our key workers obviously need to get to places where they can best serve our community.
Councillor McCrory?
Well, I think the reality is that the financial situation that the council's facing is that we've had to take some very hard decisions. So I'm pretty sure I'm correct on that unless there's an officer present who will contradict me, but yes, there are no exemptions for key workers because we just need, desperately need the income from our car parking because the council has taken such a massive financial hit over the last two and a half months.
I think it's also worth adding councillor Bentley, that actually it's no longer, obviously it's not just key workers who are going, who are going to work now, more and more people are going back to work. And also, it would be an administrative nightmare to run a whole series of exemptions. I mean, obviously, you know, other people have raised the issue about, in other, in other areas about car parking. And we need, it would, it would be, it would be more costly to, it would be extremely costly and you'd have to run a judgment system as to who counts as a key worker. So I don't think it's very practical either. Right, I'm going to move on to councillor Highland.
Thank you Chair. Are you happy to take my, my questions are in regards to agenda items? Do you want me to wait until the appointed, pointing the agenda or ask them now?
Okay, which, which, which are your questions? Which items?
6.2, 7.1, 7.3 and 8.
Okay, well, I'll bring you in then as the spoke, presumably as the spokesperson for your group on those items.
Thank you Chair.
Okay. Right. So those are all items on the agenda, as is councillor, councillor Dobson, is your question related to something on the agenda or something else?
Yes Chair, it is, it's relating to 6.1, I'm sorry, I'm, this is.
Okay, okay, yeah, no, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm now, okay, yeah, that's fine. So I will take, what I'll do is I'm going to get councillor Moore to make the presentation on 6.1, then I will take councillors Daiden and Dobson as opposition spokespeople and then we'll go from there. I think that's it then for question time, otherwise, other than things that are on the agenda. So I shall move on down the agenda. So item 6.1, councillor Moore regarding the petition.
Good evening Chair, good evening everyone. Can you hear and see me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Excellent, that's a good start. This item was originally due for April's Cabinet, obviously due to circumstances that intervened, we had to postpone, I'm very glad to bring it to Cabinet for consideration this evening. The purpose of the report, I'll just read the purpose and then go on to a summary. This is to consider a petition submitted on the 22nd of January 2020 by Mrs Angela Walters, requesting that the council reconsider changing of the opening hours for unaccompanied 14 and 15 year olds to the Riverside Gym facility. I hope you would have a chance to have read the report. Within it, you will have seen the customer survey that was undertaken, which did answer some of my own questions actually on this. I would also like to draw members' attention to the Equality Impact Assessment, which has been carried out, that was carried out following the submission of the petition. Just to summarise some of the findings in that. The Equality Impact Assessment found that a greater duty of care is required for our under-16s due to possible incorrect techniques or excessive weight loading that could cause injury to them. Allowing under-16s to use our gym facilities places a higher burden on operators than adult customers, obviously because of that duty of care and because young people may be new to using the equipment. Riverside offers equal or greater opportunities for our 14 and 15 year olds to use the gym than other operators in the county and certainly private gyms. And it is the industry norm to preclude under-16s from using those gym facilities during peak weekday evenings when it's difficult to provide required supervision and support to ensure the health and safety of all our users. We have consulted various bodies in looking at this report. I, I would also like to say that the benefit of our leisure centres is that we offer a wide range of activities for under-16s to take part in, which are not necessarily available at other sites. This includes exercise classes and for those young people who cannot attend after 5.30 to the gym with an accompanying parent or guardian, they can still book classes, use the facilities as they will be once we reopen. So there will be bookable swims and they'll be able to use the classes once they begin. We're also hoping to continue with our online classes. I will come on to that because as you can imagine, detailed plans are currently being worked up by our officers, taking on board all the government guidelines, guidance from governing and industry bodies and our own risk assessments. We are planning on reopening the Riverside on Monday the 6th of July, but services will look very different to begin with. As this applies to our young users as well as all others, for the gym, all sessions are planned to be pre-bookable, one hour sessions initially, with a 15 minute gap between to allow for cleaning. Our under-16s will have the same access as they did prior to lockdown, they will be able to book the sessions in the same way as adults. Additionally, as many will not be in school at this time, they will have greater access during the daytime than they would normally have. I hope, having read the report and I do appreciate it's, it's got a more thorough appraisal of the, with the Equality Impact Assessment now in place as well. I very much hope that you will consider it acceptable that we keep the situation as it is, continuing with current arrangements, but we will continue to monitor the situation closely and especially with regard to how our life has changed in the last three or four months. Thank you. I'm very happy to take questions now.
Thanks very much councillor Moore. So councillor Dobson?
Yes, thank you Chair, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thanks.
I'm interested, my interest in this is that obviously it's very important to encourage good exercise habits with young people. And, but similarly, I do appreciate that it's difficult to create a balance and obviously if there has, have been behaviour issues in the past. Some of the local children or kids, they, they do attend schools, I'm thinking when we're back to normal, they do attend schools outside of the area and to access the gym during the weekday by 5.30 is perhaps out of, out of the question for them because of obviously travelling etc. I know you mentioned some classes, my suggestion was going to be, is there any scope for some kind of gym programme, exercise circuit training etc, say of a weekday evening, say 6pm or thereabouts, so that the youngsters can use the gym in a more controlled manner but still enabling them to get good exercise habits at an earlier age? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Dobson. It's an interesting question. We, to begin with, as Riverside reopens, we will need to establish individual bookable sessions in the gym, but I do take on board your point that people are travelling from outside the city centre and don't necessarily have access to the gym. I would also make the point that gym sessions are just one part of a healthy, balanced lifestyle and we're fortunate in Chelmsford to have local outside recreation provision. But if I may, I will take your question back to a Leisure and Heritage Services Manager and provide you with a written response to that suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think it's fair to say we're always, we're always willing to look at suggestions for how things can be tweaked. So I hope that helps councillor Dobson. Right, and so moving on to councillor Daiden.
Evening Miss Chair. Just one thing regarding the, the legal side of the report, I know it was problematic when we, the teenagers tried to submit this report and I just, you know, I think we both agree that it was, it was vital that everybody, especially children, are, have a good experience when they deal with authority. So I did move a motion for the City Council to host our own petition site so that we would stop any petition being submitted without it meeting our criteria. And, you know, thank the Deputy Leader for recognising the importance of that and the Government Committee for recently making it easier for petitions to be submitted, but I know it's still under consideration and I just wondered if we had an update of where we're at with that at the moment. Regarding the report itself, 3.2 of the report, do those numbers include solo teenage members, memberships or are they teenagers in that count that are part of family memberships? In February I requested that the use of teenage, the numbers for the people using the gym, the teenagers, from June to February, if I could see those, it gives a more transparent picture of how this policy has actually affected teenagers. And is that data now available and could we see it? Regarding the options on the report, we've heard that the gym will be different when it opens, does this administration see that as an end to group gatherings in the gym that were the start of all the problems and why the policy was changed? And our new normal, it's an opportunity for us to rewrite the rules and create a gym policy that is inclusive for family life. But we also have to plan for a longer term and not just social distancing right here and now. With, I think with a more extensive induction, we can keep children safe, you know, I recognise Riverside have been leaders in the initiative for encouraging teenagers into the gym, but I just think let's, let's carry on building on that. So I would, I would really appreciate it if the administration would consider a fourth option and I would like to propose a teenage plus membership that serious gym users in their 14 to 15 year age group, from a recommendation from either a coach, a teacher or a gym instructor, be allowed to use the gym unsupervised after 5.30 if they meet our criteria. And, you know, teenagers from Chelmsford Hockey Club have trained and developed at Riverside after 5.30, unaccompanied and due to scoring commitments, that wouldn't have been possible. You know, that hockey club is brilliantly supportive of youngsters, it has seen two Olympians as members of the club and I'm sure there are similar stories from lots of sports clubs in the borough. Members that use Riverside as a backup mechanism to their own training, but to continually deliver that kind of excellence and inspire people, I mean, I hope this administration can recognise that we need to utilise all our private and public assets. If you remember Ava Wallace represented Essex in the under-16 pentathlon.
Councillor Daiden, councillor Daiden, could I, you know, this isn't, this isn't opportunity for us for a long, long speech, this is a question, which, so I'm going to, no, I'm going to ask you to come to a conclusion there, you've asked three questions so far. And I'm going to ask councillor Goldman to briefly answer your question about the management of petitions and then I'll bring councillor Moore in. Councillor Marie Goldman?
Yes, thank you, thank you Chair. Yeah, councillor Daiden, thank you for your question, I know that this is something that is really important to you and certainly important to me as well about the ability for people to be able to support or to send in petitions and for them to be accepted. As I wrote to you on the 28th of April, I think you'll, you'll hopefully recall that when I wrote to you at that date, I said that we were happy to accept online petitions and we were making arrangements to make sure that that was happening. But in the meantime, we were also looking at developing our own e-petitions. I think you'll understand the reasons why that has had to take a bit of a back burner with digital services being understandably otherwise occupied with making sure that all the homeworking that has been taking place, that has been taking place over the last few months has, has been properly supported. And so unfortunately, some things have had to take a bit of a back burner, but that doesn't mean that we couldn't accept petitions. And like I said, as I wrote to you on the 28th of April, we said that we would accept online petitions and that remains to be the case.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that. I really want to speak for the people that signed that petition because I think it's, you know, sport gives those without a family a really caring environment and I think it's really important that we try.
Councillor Daiden, sorry, you're making another speech, this is, we've heard you and we, and that was, the first bit was about the management of petitions, which I think councillor Goldman has dealt with. And as regard- And as regards your suggestion for some variations, I'm sure councillor Moore will have a comment, but I would say that even if we agree the recommended option, which is option three, option three says we will always keep it under review. Now, as councillor Moore said in her introduction, we're going to have to keep everything under review for the next, once we reopen in July. So everything is up for debate as to how we manage the leisure centre, given the social distancing. So I'm sure we can look at your additional suggestion outside of the meeting, but councillor Moore?
Thank you Chair. Thank you councillor Daden. Regarding your first question to me on the numbers referred to in those breakdowns, it was the solo under sixteen memberships only. Detailed breakdowns of the uses have not been provided to me or other cabinet members. But I understand that you were provided with an hour-by-hour usage for two sample weeks, twenty-first of the twenty-seventh of October twenty nineteen, twenty-seventh of January to the second of February, so either side of the change of hours. This wouldn't provide a very comprehensive overview, I agree, and then there are so many fluctuations throughout the year for various reasons, so data is better analysed over a longer term. Clearly, what's happened in the last few months, coronavirus impacting us, will have affected those usage patterns hugely, indeed from late February. And it will take some time now for patterns to stabilise again. But that is just going to take time and we will obviously be reviewing regularly usage throughout the Riverside Centre and especially with regard to the young people who've taken the time and those people have taken the time to sign the petition. You had a second question regarding talented athletes. If I may just mention, we do have the Sports Ambassadors System scheme in place locally. This is for athletes aged eleven and over, in fact, there's no maximum age limit. It's inclusive of Olympic and Paralympic activities. And it's essentially a talented athletes programme and we would provide flexibility on access times to facilitate their training. And this is something that we can certainly pursue on reopening. We're an inclusive as club with members who are able to enjoy the facilities, no matter what their talents. I know there are very many local clubs that support their athletes. There are also initiatives at county-wide and national level that encourage excellence in sport. Sport is for all, sport's for everyone and it's part of the health and wellbeing plan that we put forward and our plan, our Chelmsford, everything that you've said resonates with that and we'll continue to provide as much accessibility as we can to help people improve their health and wellbeing and enjoy their sport.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Don't believe there are any further questions?
I don't think so.
In that case, if I may, Chair, I would like to move the recommendations to the report that the current arrangement continues, but as with all leisure centre programming, it is kept under review.
Thank you very much. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to six point two, that's also councillor Moore on CCTV.
Thank you again, thank you Chair. This report basically formalises policy on monitoring a third-party CCTV systems in place and includes several interested parish councils, some of whom already have established systems and others who are planning to do so, and other clients whereby they pay a fee to the City Council. CCTV has become a part of our daily life. It contributes to community safety in our city centre and further afield. We had six parish councils interested in or already implementing CCTV systems on their property. And we found that the hub is able to provide a free service and represents excellent value being free and an excellent community provision and peace of mind. I'd just like to draw members' attentions within the report to the fact that there are some strict requirements in place regarding the monitoring of parish council CCTV systems. And that is outlined very clearly, so all the data protection regulations are to be abided by and they would agree to surrender appropriate data to Essex Police to help with any pursuance of potential crimes that have been committed. I hope everything in the report is clear. The recommendation today is to approve the proposed policy on monitoring third-party CCTV systems. And I welcome any questions if you have any.
I think there's councillor Highland on this one.
Thank you.
Thank you Chair. Page eighteen of the Agenda Pack, paragraph three point three for reference. This is a bit of a favourite theme for me, village services versus city centre services. This is another city-centric service approach. When sixty-five percent of crime is committed outside of the city centre, why is there not more proactive monitoring around identified hotspots in our villages like shopping parades? In paragraph four point one, you talk about chargeable basis. There is no charge matrix that I saw in the papers. Could you explain who pays for the current resources? And if the resources are not able to provide an inclusive, citywide monitoring, do we need to invest, empower and help those resources to protect residents in villages as well as businesses in the city centre? And also in paragraph four point one, bullet point number one talks about with the exception of parish councils, which we welcome, obviously the free services. But is it possible that you could consider to insert and housing partnerships? Like Chelma Housing Partners or even Parish Halls that own the CCTV? Because they're part of the council network, if you like. Because they're owners of many of our shopping parades, these partnerships would benefit from the CCTV proactive monitoring to reduce their crime and the fear of crime in the villages. Thank you Chair for allowing me to ask that question. Or a number of questions, should I say.
Thank you councillor Highland.
Councillor Moore?
I hope you'll appreciate that, having just heard your questions this evening, I'm unable to give you a formal response, but I will be very happy to take your questions to Paul Brooks and the Community Safety Partnership and see what we can, we can come back to you with a response and then we'll be able to hopefully share that with you. And I welcome your ideas and I do appreciate that we need to cater for a wider community, not just the city centre.
Thank you Rose. Is it possible the insertion that I requested could be considered tonight? Or would you want to leave further point?
I need to seek advice really from Mr Mayfield on that, I believe, if there's an amendment to be made.
I muted myself. I think it would be easier because if we make an amendment on the hoof, so to speak, we don't know the consequences of that. I think you've made councillor Highland a very valid point that's worth looking at. And if we can do that, I mean, obviously there would be potentially additional resources involved. Also, we don't know about the quality of the feed because all our cameras are now pretty new and high-quality digital and a lot of other cameras aren't. So the feed from those cameras isn't very good at night or it's often, the definition isn't good enough for criminal tracing purposes. So we can always look at that, we're always happy to look at extending those kind of services. So I suggest that councillor Moore comes back to you outside of the meeting. But for now, if we take the policy forward, the policy as proposed gives us flexibility to amend it in future.
Thank you Chair. Thank you.
Unless, I don't think there are any other questions on six point two? No, I haven't seen any. So councillor Moore, propose?
I do, happy to move the recommendations in this report.
Thank you very much. Is that agreed colleagues?
Agreed.
Thanks very much.
Agreed.
Right.
Thank you Chair, thank you.
Right, moving on. Councillor McCrory has three items to propose, two of which come to us via Policy Board. So councillor McCrory, first on Making Places, seven point one? Thank you very much. Is that agreed colleagues?
Agreed.
Thanks very much.
Thank you Chair, thank you.
Right, moving on. McCrory has three items. Yeah, we appear to be rebroadcasting for a moment, can you bear with us? So councillor McCrory, first on Making Places, seven point one?
Thank you Chair. I should point out right from the start that these two reports are complementary and come to Cabinet following approval by the Policy Board in early March. And they will form part of a suite of documents that are integral to the adopted local plan. And members will recall the workshops in January when they were able to give useful input to the drafting. So the first report, Making Places SPD, sets out how this council will seek to promote and secure high-quality, sustainable development. And paragraph two point two of this report is key in that it talks about providing good practice guidance on how development can go beyond planning policy requirements to create the most sustainable and environmentally friendly development possible. And in particular, to address issues related to climate change. The appendix one, which is attached, is the actual supplementary planning document and that sets out in much greater detail how this will be achieved under six headings. And these are shown in four point one in the report. We are required to consult and this will be, this will be carried out just as soon as it's practical because of the current situation, but it will be over a four-week period. And attached also is appendix two and that is what might be described as an internal consultation statement in that it shows the input that's been made into the document by other council services. We were also required under the National Planning Policy Framework to provide a self-build and custom-built build template and this is included in appendix three. So as I say, it has been through the Policy Board, we did have the Members' Workshop and the recommendations, one or two, are shown on the front page. Have you just taken any questions?
Thank you councillor McCrory. I gather councillor Bentley is the spokesperson for the independent group on this subject. So councillor Bentley?
Yeah, I've got three questions for councillor McCrory. Two are from councillor Highland and one from myself. First of all, we'd be interested to hear details of the Parish Council Developers Forum and whether local residence groups will be allowed to be involved in that. Often, there are other voices than parish councils that represent residents in one form or another. My second question is to do with affordable housing and whether we can insert the word genuinely affordable housing in where it occurs. I think I've got page twenty-seven of the Agenda Pack, paragraph one point six. So that it more closely reflects what we're trying to achieve as a council, which is houses that our residents can actually afford rather than buy some random definition. And thirdly, on a more, say a lighter tone, it's not really a light tone, hedgehog highways, which is in paragraph five point six. I wonder if this could be fleshed out a little bit more as this will involve building passages through boundary walls, which may not be what everybody expects a hedgehog highway to be. But it's making sure that hedgehogs are able to migrate or move around gardens within a development. Thank you.
All right, so this is, thank you councillor Bentley, this is all on planning obligations. So as regards to the Developers Forum, it's a two-stage process in the master plans as you will be aware of the Southwood and Ferrars Scheme where you have a Developers Forum first and they go through the master plan process and then other stakeholders and interested parties come along after that. I'm sure with the development of the size of the one at Southwood and Ferrars, there will be ongoing discussions with your town council and similarly in other areas where there are parish councils, there will be full engagement. My parish council at Springfield is fully involved with, and the Broomfield and Great Waltham one, a Little Waltham one, with the North East Chelmsford Garden Villages project. So there will be ongoing dialogue on all of these things. As far as affordable housing is concerned, yeah, how do you define genuinely? I know it's a sore point, it's been a sore point with us as well. But I think, you know, that's open to interpretation and everybody's probably got an opinion on that. If you're in struggling, your income is struggling, you would probably not agree to whatever genuinely definition we came up with. So we just have to have affordable and we'll leave that to the negotiations which will follow afterwards. As far as the hedgehog highways is concerned, yes, we do particularly refer to that. Obviously, with new developments, we will want to repopulate areas with wildlife and hedgehogs fall into that category. Whether we can actually insist on homes that people will purchase will have holes under their fences or their walls, I think that would be down to negotiation. But the important thing is that we do want to have wildlife corridors within developments so that it is a route for wild animals, small mammals and so on, and birds and other wildlife to actually have a little quiet haven and also the fact that they can get from one part of the area to another. So I think we do want the hedgehog highways, but I think what you're suggesting is something which can be discussed when we really get down to the actual details of the individual property design. But thank you for those questions.
Indeed, yes, thank you councillor Bentley. I'd just add that this is, you know, an important part of the sort of the master planning process which comes after, now that we've adopted the local plan, we need master plans for the major sites and that's a good opportunity to talk about the housing mix in each development. So, right, councillor McCrory, do you want to take us through the Making Places and then the Planning Obligations documents?
Yes, thank you. So as regards the Developer Obligations SPD, this goes into some detail to describe how the section one oh six and the community infrastructure levies will make development proposals acceptable in planning terms. And this document, together with the other earlier one, they sit alongside the council's community infrastructure levy charging schedule, which again gives clear, that's in existence now and that gives clear guidance to developers, landowners and other stakeholders. So the actual document which is attached as an appendix goes into far more detail. But the aim is to assist in creating development which is fairer, greener, safer and better connected in line with the council's corporate objectives, as in our Chelmsford airplan. As I say, it's the main document which will be consulted on, which is a very lengthy one. It will be consulted on in the same way over a four-week period when we're able to do this in a meaningful way. But I should point out that this particular one was subject to previous consultation back in two thousand and eighteen and that was included in the evidence. back in two thousand and eighteen, and that was included in the evidence base to the examination in public for the local plan. And since then, there've been a few revisions due to national policy changes. But this background and the four funding categories for infrastructure are given in greater detail in four point one or four point five. And again, the five to five point five cover the consultation that will be held. But it's important to note that, as again, this had the workshop earlier in January of members who were able to make their views known and make an impact. They were taken on board. It went to the Policy Board. The Policy Board made some further revisions and they've been incorporated. And as with the previous document, there was the internal consultation across the council organisation and that's shown in appendix two. And so the recommendations, one and two, are shown on the front page and happy to move at the appropriate moment. Thank you.
Thanks very much. So yeah, we've got two significant items here. This is, I think it's worth reminding colleagues, and I can certainly say as far as councillor Bentley is concerned, that as councillor McCrory has just said, we are agreeing these to go out for consultation. So if there is any further input, that can come back after this meeting. And we can, if any policies need emphasizing or clarifying, we can do that during the consultation. So I don't think we have any questions on seven point one, the Making Places document. Unless anybody quickly wants to correct me. I don't, I think that I've got two, I've got questions though for seven point two. Sorry, councillor Roberts, are you, are you a question on seven point one, the Making Places document?
Well, in fact, my question relates to both of them actually. Because the same thing, the same question would be answered. I'm just going to answer it once. Basically, you're talking about a four-week consultation. But two questions on that. Why is it not the normal six weeks? And also when? Because the concern I have is when you look at calendars and things, and with the current situation, we're running into the summer, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I think the members of the public and parish councils might have difficulty if the four weeks is at the wrong time. Six weeks would be a better option. So I just think we need to have the timing right. I personally haven't got anything wrong with the documents, but I just think we need to give the public a better chance at reporting.
Okay, thank you. And I would just say one thing, that we've about to, the city life, next city life newspaper is going out. And I think there's a reference to these consultations in there. And so that will go to every house across the district. Councillor McCrory, do you have anything on the procedural point that councillor Roberts asked?
Well, I think we've decided that four weeks is a long enough period. The question of when, well, we don't want to delay. But at the same time, we want to put in place a meaningful way in which people can make their contribution. So we need to make sure that there's online procedures for people and telephone contacts and so on so that people do have the opportunity. Because unless things change quite dramatically in the next few weeks, we're not going to be able to have public meetings or even exhibitions could be quite difficult to manage. But we do want to get on with it. But at the same time, we want to make sure it's right. Mr. Chairman, could I just come back? Councillor Bentley, he did actually contact me with another question with regard to appendix one, table twelve on a previous report. I don't know whether he forgot to mention that or whether he's got the answer that he wants. I don't know whether you could just check with him for me.
Yeah.
Hi there, I thought that was in seven point two and we hadn't quite got to it yet, so.
Yeah, okay, yeah, we're coming to that. Yeah. Okay, so I think we're done on seven point one. If councillor McCrory wants to introduce seven point two.
Chair, I put my hand up.
On, yeah, on councillor Highland, was that on seven point one?
Seven point one, yes, please.
Sorry, I didn't, you didn't have that in the, you haven't got that in the chat. It's difficult to know which item it responds to. Okay, councillor Highland, briefly then, on seven point one.
Thank you, Chair. So the local residence groups, I didn't quite get the answer that councillor McCrory gave. That parish councillors and developers, the forum, would be supplemented by local residence groups like Jabeen or Hayes Park or Southwood and Ferrars Action Group, for example. And the other point about the genuinely affordable housing, there is a definition for genuinely affordable housing. It's based on local median earnings. And that's what we should be supplying affordable housing for, for our residents. So again, can we just ask for a clear answer from councillor McCrory?
Well, as I said earlier, what we've said in the report will cover that point and it's open to interpretation and negotiation with the developers at the time. And it will depend on the size of the development and various other factors. So for the moment, we're just leaving it with that phrase.
Thank you. Mr. Potter, one of our officers, said he'd like to come in. Jeremy Potter?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thanks.
Thank you. Just very quickly on that point in terms of the definition of affordable housing. Councillor McCrory is completely right in his response. I just wanted to supplement it by just pointing out that the definition of affordable housing to be secured through the planning system is defined within the National Planning Policy Framework at extent of the MPPF. And that sets out clearly the definition that all councils have to abide by to secure affordable housing through the planning system. Thank you, Chair.
And thank you very much. Right, okay, let's move on. I think, I think we've done on seven point one. Is seven point one agreed, members? Yeah.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Okay, so yeah, indeed. Right, seven point two, we've got, I think you've also sort of spoken to this already, but so let's take the questions from councillor Whitehead and councillor Bentley again. And then if you, and then if you've got anything else to add, councillor McCrory, come back. So councillor Whitehead?
Right, yes, thank you, Chair. Can I make a point of order? We have various people making various attempts to speak on subjects to which they're not nominated for under the agreement that went through full council. Now, I'm conscious that you are, of course, being very generous to them, but various people, councillor Daden wasn't qualified under the system to speak on the ones she spoke on. And you had the same situation there with other people, councillor Bentley, asking questions on subject that, quite rightly, he is not the spokesman for, councillor Keith Bentley is. So we're getting a little bit confused by all that, really. And I'm conscious that we have nominated people, as have the independent group. And logically, each should only ask questions on the subject that they're nominated for. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to attack anybody particularly, but you know the difficulty. There is nobody otherwise having nominated people.
No, no, I, I, I thank you, councillor Whitehead.
Just consider that, that's all I would ask.
Yeah, I, I take your, I take your point. And it's tricky to obviously remember who the spokespeople are on each subject. So I'm trying to take one person from each of the opposition groups, whoever they have, whoever happens to get in first, because I can't necessarily remember who the official spokesperson is. But, and I'm sure we all get better at this.
As I say, I do understand the great difficulty with the whole system now. And I don't want to stop people speaking. That wasn't my intention.
No, that, that's.
Specific subject. The recommendations say, any subsequent changes to the SPD and finalising of all consultation material is delegated to the Director of Sustainable Communities in consultation with the Cabinet member for sustainable development. That means, as I understand it, the whole paper goes out for consultation. It comes back, it's considered, and then never comes back to Cabinet again. Is that correct?
Councillor McCrory?
Well, that is what it says in the recommendation.
Yes.
But I would suggest that the intention would be any minor clarifications or amendments which are not particularly significant is meant to cover that. I would suggest if there was anything really significant, you can rely on myself and the director to say, I think that ought to go back to Cabinet or Policy Board in these particular cases.
Yes, Mr. Potter, I think, wanted to clarify that point as well.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I mean, the report would need to come back to Cabinet to be adopted at some point. So I take the point that the recommendation, maybe the wording of the recommendation lends it to that interpretation. Excuse me. But the SPD, both SPDs would need to come back as normal with the consultation feedback from the consultation period and with a revised copy for members to actually then consider again and to approve and adopt if that's the recommendation that's put forward.
Yes, I think, I think the wording of that recommendation too probably was slightly the wrong way around. I think what it meant was the finalising of the consultation document should, could be agreed by the Cabinet member, not the document itself. I agree, it's not quite, it's not exactly what it says. But so I think councillor, Mr. Potter has clarified that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm also happy that it's a consultation document. And as ever, we mustn't sort of play around with it. Sorry, I have one particular query on eight point two six, maintenance payments. Now, this is one where it says maintenance contributions will require for all open spaces provided on site. And then there's a series of points underneath that. But it does suggest that the council's preference is for all open spaces to be transferred to and adopted by the council. Now, during a previous administration, we spent a lot of time dealing with very difficult small sites that we'd like to get rid of. And that's something I think perhaps that could be amended here slightly because there's two sorts of sites. There's the twenty-foot square piece of grass that nobody in the world actually wants, but we have to send a man out with a mower and a tractor. And then there's the sites that can be developed in the future. And certainly, I understand why you'd keep those. But if it could be tweaked slightly to say appropriate sites or whatever. I mean, I don't know what Keith Nicholson's view is on this, but we all know that his staff have to come out quite long distances in some cases to cut a very tiny piece of grass. Now, secondly on that, you've suggested taking over by parish councils. We tried that one and nearly all parish councils said, no, thank you very much. And I suspect it won't be different. But it's a consultation document and no doubt we will consider what comes back.
Councillor McCrory, do you want to answer? Councillor Whitehead?
I, I think all I would add to that is that I do recall this conversation at the Policy Board in some detail. And that's a result of that debate. This is what the paper has come up with. But as you've just said, when the consultation comes back, we will look at it along with everything else that comes back on the consultation.
Okay, thank you very much indeed for your help.
Yeah, I think it's worth noting that we have, we are changing the policy from the previous administration in that we are, we think that it is better for the council to own public access infrastructure rather than it be in the hands of the private developer who may or may not be in existence at some point in the future. So we do think it's important. Okay, sorry, next was councillor Bentley for the independent group on seven two.
Yes, just a very, a very quick comment to do with an item that occurs on table twelve, page fifty-eight of the document. The, it's to do with the bridge, the foot and cycle bridge over the B one oh one two. I'm fairly certain, I'm speaking on behalf of the town council and having had a neighbourhood planning meeting today, the neighbourhood plan as well, that the, the bridge is not part of our vision for crossings of the B one oh one two Burnham Road. We are looking to just having crossings. So I believe that we could save ourselves a lot of time and money if that was removed.
Councillor McCrory?
Yes, thank you, Chair. And thank you, thank you councillor Bentley for giving me some advance notice there. Obviously, I'm looking at all these documents on a screen. So it's helpful to actually have the reference in advance because ploughing through all these different pages and different documents takes a bit of time. So thank you for that. In terms of your actual question, following the special council and the debate that we had on the possibility of a bypass round the strategic growth site in Southwood and Ferrars, talking to planning officers, we do think that there is scope there to discuss all of this at the master plan stage. So your suggestion there, I think, again, that would form part of that discussion. But obviously, as I've said so many times in the past, Essex County Council is the highways authority and we need to get them on side for all these sorts of suggestions. So I take your point, if you're going to integrate that strategic growth site into Southwood and Ferrars, then you do need a number of crossings. But I think, take it that we will have a more of an in-depth look at all of that when we develop the master plan process. I don't know whether Mr. Potter would like to make a comment or not, but I think that's the way that we'll probably try and deal with it.
Yes, Jeremy Potter?
Yes, so absolutely right in regard to the form of master planning through this process. So local plan, as you discussed last week, is allocating the site and the principles within the site allocations policy. We want to make sure that we integrate sites as best as we can through cycling, walking and making that connectivity. The actually precise form of that connectivity crossing is always going to be subject to more detailed assessment through traffic assessments and through the master planning process. And precisely through, as councillor Bentley was saying, through consultation with the local community. So it is definitely the role of the master plan to determine the detail of these matters. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. I think we're done on seven point two. Councillor McCrory, do you want to move the recommendation?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'd like to formally move the recommendations as printed.
Thank you very much. Is that agreed, colleagues?
Agreed.
Agreed. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Right, now we're going to move on to the next item, seven point three, which is Tyndale Square Public Realm Improvement Scheme. There's a, there's a report and there's a presentation. And Mr. Noble, I believe, I think has rejoined, ready to ask his question. So that we don't keep Mr. Noble hanging on, wondering when we're going to call him. Mr. Noble, are you available to ask your question now?
Yes. Hello?
Yeah, I can hear you but can't see. There we go. Yes, thank you.
Yes. Good evening, Chair. Sorry, I'm the only person without a collar and tie. I would, I wanted to present a statement which I have circulated to the council on behalf of Chelmsford Civic Society. And the issue for us of the pedestrianisation plan for Tyndale Square is something that has been advocated by the civic society and. for Tyndale Square is something that has been advocated by the civic society and others for the past nine years. We started our first letter to the then leader Peter Martin of Essex County Council from John Johnson, the county surveyor's original concept of placing the Shire Hall and the land surrounding it at the Chelmsford's historic core. And we consider that the plan before you this evening, Chair, restores that position and is very welcome indeed. The scheme now before Cabinet reconnects the cathedral and the Shire Hall to the High Street. Yeah, I may remind you, Chair, that when John Lewis arrived in Chelmsford, they told us that they expected a positive response from the city. And the city council has indeed responded positively, spending 2.3 million on upgrading Half Moon Square and Bell Meadow. Essex County Council having spent nearly a million pounds on repairs and cleaning of the Shire Hall frontage. The Chelmsford Civic Society was represented by myself on a reference group set up by Essex County Council to consider the future of Shire Hall. And that incorporated the land in front, so the land behind, which is the cathedral land, and Tyndale Square itself. The society remains committed to the principles set out by the county at that point on the future of the Shire Hall and the surrounding land, which was achieving demonstrable value for money, delivering a sustainable financial model and continuation of public access and a sense of community ownership. A giant step forward will be taken, will take place if you accept this recommendation before you this evening with option one. In early 2016, councillor Dick Madden and I submitted a Shire Hall, what we called the Shire Hall Plan, to both Essex County Council and the City Council. This set out a strategy for future use and a scheme for the operation of the building. Inherent in that was the linking of Shire Hall to the High Street, was seen very much as integral to the plan. The document still stands. This is it. And I have had a letter today from councillor Madden indicating his full support from the civic society's position. And we have presented this also to the Essex County Council's preferred bidder for Shire Hall. I do therefore come to the following conclusions, which I put to you and your colleagues, Chair. On behalf of Chelmsford Civic Society, I wish to indicate full support for the Tyndale Square Improvement Scheme and Option One, considering it true value for money. I see this as establishing a city square that will transform the historic core of Chelmsford. I consider also that it will help to address the likely effects of the virus on city centre footfall. Further, I should request the Cabinet, and I've made this point to you personally before, Chair, to engage the civic society in its discussions directly with Essex County Council on detailed plans for this scheme, the Tyndale Square scheme, and the future of Shire Hall itself. That's our position in full support of the recommendation, including option one.
And thank you very much for joining in the meeting this evening. Thank you very much. Councillor McCrory, do you have anything to say to Mr Noble?
Thank you, Chair. I think a lot of what I'm going to say will cover what Mr Noble has just said because I welcome the very supportive statement from the Chelmsford Civic Society. And I'm very pleased that he's made that statement, actually. It's extremely helpful today. I think, reading through the statement, I think really the only question that arises is the request that the Cabinet engage with the civic society and the County Council on both this scheme and the future of the Shire Hall. And I'm sure that we can accommodate that as we, if the recommendation is agreed tonight, I'm sure we can accommodate that request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, would you like to now move on with the main part of the presentation?
Thank you. I'm aware that another statement was sent in. The individual wasn't able to actually join the meeting virtually. But if I understand correctly from Mr Mayfield, the request was that this statement be read out by someone.
Yeah, I'm just trying to find it. Right, yes, you're right. So Dr Beckley is an architectural historian. He wrote in, I'm not going to read it all out. I think he commented on the history, the setting of Shire Hall and that the proposed improvement would be a significant step on the way to improving the situation will connect Shire Hall with the High Street. And he supported the previous pedestrianization but felt that the way the surface had been laid wasn't very good, but feels that Half Moon Square is a good example of what can be done and that we should follow that example. And he concluded that the council's proposal for Tyndale Square would be a tremendous improvement and will make a significant contribution to the future of the Shire Hall. So as you say, councillor McCrory, I'm sure we welcome that and would take those comments on board as we move forward.
Yeah, I think, if I may, Chair, I think there's just really one question that I've picked out there. And that is the question that is asked with regard to restoring the Sebastopol Cannon to its place in front of the Shire Hall. This is something which I was going to refer to in my comments, but I'll do it now. And that is that this has been the subject of some internal discussion. And I think at this stage, I wouldn't commit either way because there are different views on this subject. But perhaps we can assure Dr Beckley that we will consider that as the design phase proceeds. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr Noble, you've put your video back on. Could you leave the meeting now? Or you could mute and switch your video off? Thank you very much for taking part this evening. I think we're now got an actual PowerPoint presentation to show, which officers were just about to show to us, I think. So I think we'll move on and that's got a a voice, yeah, we will hear Stuart Graham, yeah?
Tyndale Square has been at the heart of the historic functioning of the city of Chelmsford for centuries, shown here in 1795, shortly after the opening of the Shire Hall. Over the years, as the city has evolved, so has the space at the top of the High Street. But the idea to remove traffic from Tyndale Square is not a new one and is at least 70 years old. In 1950, architectural historian Pevsner described Tyndale Square as the centre of the town, which could be more easily appreciated if it were rid of its traffic. In the early 1990s, when the High Street was pedestrianized, Tyndale Square was identified as a future phase of pedestrianization in the city centre. The project builds on recent public realm investments in the city centre. Recent projects have included Half Moon Square on the High Street at the entrance to Bond Street, Bell Meadow opposite the rear entrance to Marks and Spencer's, and Station Square and Mill Square at the rail station. From 2017, the City Council and Essex County Council have been working in partnership to design the pedestrianization of the space. In the summer of 2019, public consultation showed that 58% of respondents either strongly supported or supported the scheme. And importantly, the project is supported by business, including the One Chancellor Business Improvement District and the Chancellor Business Board. Public realm investment is important for many reasons. Investment can increase footfall by up to 35%. It gives confidence to businesses to invest. It also engenders a sense of place and civic pride where people can meet and events can take place. And importantly, it supports the local economy and creates jobs. And in Chelmsford, the Public Realm Programme has helped the council lever in millions of pounds of funding from the government and development. Since the 2019 consultation, two preliminary design options have been developed. Both options will create the following: a new public square at the heart of the city centre, a flexible space for future events, a reconnection of the Shire Hall and the cathedral of the city centre, and tree planting to help green the space. Option one provides for a new accessible entrance to the front of Shire Hall, shown here in this scheme visualization. Pedestrians would have priority within the new space, but cyclists would be able to move through Tyndale Square. This will maintain an important north-south connection as part of the city centre's cycle network. Cycling down the High Street would still be prohibited. A traffic assessment has been carried out to consider the impact of the removal of motorized vehicles from Tyndale Square on the rest of the road network. This has shown that the impact would be neutral, with less than 15 seconds delay at the New Street and Victoria Road junction. Before the scheme can be built, a new traffic regulation order is required. The traffic regulation order will enable the removal of motorized vehicle movements from New Street through to Market Road, the maintenance of the two-way cycle route between New Street and Market Road, the reversal of the current flow of delivery vehicles along the High Street, amendments to delivery access to seven days a week in 6pm and 9am, the introduction of a seven-and-a-half-ton weight limit to improve safety and protect the new paving, and the prevention of vehicles from using the Springfield Road Bridge to protect the structure. The statutory consultation on the traffic regulation order is scheduled to take place in the late summer, early autumn. The Tyndale Square Public Realm Improvement Scheme brings with it a number of benefits for the city centre. The scheme will create a new high-quality pedestrian priority space whilst maintaining an important cycle connection. It will also support the local economy of Chelmsford, giving businesses confidence to invest. And importantly, the project will enhance the historical assets in this part of the city centre, including Shire Hall, one of the city's finest listed buildings. Over the coming months, the council's preferred option, option one, will be developed into a detailed design. And it is anticipated that the scheme will be implemented in the first half of 2021.
Right, well, thank you to Stuart Graham for putting that presentation together. There is some of the slide, one of the penultimate slide, the visualization is attached to the agenda. So if you missed that on the presentation, you can see it on the agenda attachments. So but moving on to the actual report that relates to this, councillor McCrory, do you want to take us through that?
Yes, thank you very much, Chair. And also from me, thank you very much to Mr Graham for the presentation, which gives us the historical background and describes the process as to how we have reached this point. And it brings to life with the visualization. So we can really appreciate what significant change that it would bring. And it probably cuts down some of the things that I would have normally said. But nevertheless, we've heard those supportive statements at the beginning and that's been very welcome as well. But it's important just to be clear that what we're being asked to approve tonight is to proceed or not to the next stage of the detailed design and to go out to tender. And we would then be asked to approve the final design and contract or not at a future cabinet once we've got those tender figures in. It's no secret that I am very much in favour of proceeding with this scheme, having been involved in earlier High Street pedestrianization schemes in the 90s. And this scheme has featured in the council's public realm strategy for many years and indeed is next in line in that strategy, following completion of all the others which are listed in 1.3 in this report. And it continues up from Half Moon Square, which has been mentioned previously. And the strategy is an integral part of the recently adopted local plan. So as an Essex boy and living in Chelmsford for the last 35 years, I'm conscious of the need to enhance and preserve what is left of our historical heritage in this county. And perhaps I could also mention that myself and yourself and other colleagues present have been very active over the last several years in trying to get the historic Shire Hall back into use. This scheme will not only help to achieve that, in my view, it will also show the council's commitment to providing a thriving city centre environment to support ongoing success, economic success. We need to attract inward investment by showing the council has ambition for our public spaces. And this is going to be vital as we come out of the current pandemic. Though the presentation, in my view, shows the attractiveness of removing the motorized traffic and creating pedestrian space together with this cycle link between New Street and Market Road. And so I believe that if we are serious about removing motorized vehicles from the centre, this has to be part of that. And the consultation last year showed that very nearly 60% of the public were in favour. And we've heard earlier that local businesses were also strongly supportive at that time. And in fact, it was confirmed to me yesterday when Mick McDonagh from High Chelma told me that their support had been given at the earlier consultation stage. So we've got the details of the traffic regulation order there, 2.4 to 2.7. But perhaps it's worth mentioning that Essex highways are already making the road in front of Duke Street, oh, sorry, the road from Duke Street through to the New Street junction with Victoria Road one-way under the so-called interim pop-up schemes to make narrow pavements wider to accommodate pedestrians. They mentioned about the traffic modelling, showing that there's a neutral effect on the New Street Victoria Road junction. Looking at the design elements, much of which has been already covered. But I think the paving pattern radiating out from the Shire Hall down to the Half Moon Square, and that would be in natural stone paving to respect the historical character and match that of the exchange and Half Moon Square. That would provide a very attractive finish. And with the tree planting, that will complement the street scene too. And we hope that would undoubtedly create, shall we say, a cafe culture which will encourage more footfall and attract people to stay in the city centre. and attract people to stay in the city centre longer than just doing their shopping. So I've mentioned about Dr Bentley's comments, which are helpful. He drew attention to the cathedral, and as did Mr Noble, with his significant presence. And it's worth just making the point that access arrangements have been agreed with the cathedral at the rear of the cathedral. So the east-west cycle route is integral to the scheme, and more details given there within the report. There will be the gateway access points that will be clearly marked, and there will be symbols on the ground surface so that cyclists can be clear where their pathway will be. And perhaps most importantly of all, we need to look at the financial aspects of all of this, and that's covered in three to three point nine. But it is very important to remember that there is specifically earmarked funding for the detailed scheme designed to go forward. But in terms of the future funding for the project, then three point eight makes clear that two point one one eight million pounds of capital for public realm improvements is available. But we won't know the scheme costs until the tenders are in, but three point four and three, three point three, three point four, oh, three point three, three point four, state that the estimates are something between two point seven and three point three seven, depending on the option that we, that eventually we go forward with if it's agreed tonight. But these are only estimates, there's forty percent contingency built in, which is quite a healthy contingency. And it's a comfort just to remember that Half Moon Square scheme came in fairly significantly below the estimate. So for Option One, there would be one point three million extra would be required. For Option Two, it would be point six million. So for Option One, we'd look for financial contributions from Essex County Council's owners of the Shire Hall and from their chosen developer partner. And that those extra costs are for the front entrance to make it disabled access compliant. And they will need to do that to bring the building into use. So clearly, it's in their interest to, and it makes sense to incorporate it into this detailed design at this stage. But if that's not forthcoming, then Option Two is there as a fallback position. If there is any need for additional city council funding, financial contributions, then community infrastructure funds specifically collected for public realm schemes from development in the city centre can be drawn down. So to conclude, in my view, this scheme is an investment in the city centre. It will give businesses the confidence to invest themselves, it will support the local economy, and in turn generate income for the council to then take forward the many other improvements we wish to make under our Chelmsford, our plan. So the recommendations are there, one to six, and they're listed on page two. But I'm happy to take any questions, and I believe you have noticed of one. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor McCrory. Yes, I believe councillor Watson and then councillor Bentley. Councillor Watson, are you there? Yeah.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, that's good. Yes, I have to say that our group is very much behind this scheme, Option One. And as you know, several of my colleagues were working on this for some time. Just by way of clarification on the finance, I think in three, four, you mentioned the cost of Option One is round about two point nine million. Is the Essex County Council budget of half a million for public realm improvements, is included in that figure or is it in addition to? Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Councillor McCrory, was that it, councillor Watson?
Yes, it was, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, councillor McCrory to answer the councillor Watson.
Thank you. Unless Mr Graham contradicts me, yes, I understand it is included.
Okay, good, thank you. Right, councillor Bentley, are you there on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. I'd like to ask three questions. First of all, how much of a priority is Tyndale Square in spending this amount of money at this time? Has the city council got it at the top of the list, or the administration got it at the top of the list, or is, are there other things that are perhaps more pressing? Secondly, how much of a contribution to achieving net carbon, net zero carbon by twenty thirty will this make? And finally, have there been any considerations to move in the War Memorial into Tyndale Square? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Bentley. In terms of Tyndale Square as a priority scheme for the council, I think what we always have to recognise is that there are various schemes which come under different categories. This is a public realm scheme. There is money which is collected from developers, and you'll be aware, there's been an awful lot of development in Chelmsford City Centre in recent years. And the developers are required to make contributions to the community infrastructure levy, and that is earmarked for public realm improvements in the city centre. So that's where the finance comes from. I mentioned the Public Realm Strategy, which has been around, I think, since two thousand and eleven in its current iteration. There has been previous documents of a similar vein, and it is next in line in terms of public realm strategy, schemes. So from that point of view, it's, and I think it says actually in the report, that it does actually say that this is next in line as far as public realm improvements are. And indeed, it is part of, and it is completion of, the High Street pedestrianisation schemes that have already gone on, and it links up with Half Moon Square and the Exchange, and so it completes that overall scheme. So this is just the end, if you like, almost the final piece of the jigsaw as far as pedestrianisation of the High Street and public realm improvements. So I think that that one, in terms of, yes, zero carbon, well, I mean, obviously, we're reducing the amount of motorised traffic coming along there into the central area, so that has to be to an advantage. We're also, as has been mentioned in the presentation, tree planting, so that would obviously contribute. In terms of having a quantifiable figure, I'm afraid I couldn't give you that tonight, but maybe colleagues might be able to do that. I don't know whether we're at that sort of detailed stage to be able to provide that sort of quantifiable figure. But obviously, the elements of the scheme must have a contributory effect, I would suggest. As far as the War Memorial is concerned, that actually was considered. But apart from the fact that it is listed in its current location, and it would require, well, it would be very, very difficult to get the authorities, Historic England and so on, to agree to that. But there were costs estimated, and I can't recall what it was exactly, but it was a huge sum of money to move that War Memorial. So, and anyway, I think personally, I think that it would create a real block up there to the whole concept of opening up that space. I don't know whether I actually mentioned in the end, but one of the proposals would be that we could have an events space at the top of the High Street as well on certain occasions. So you would need that open aspect to be able to do that. So I hope that covers the points. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much. Just to add a couple of, yes, the councillor McCrory is right, we did ask whether the War Memorial could be moved, and the estimate was roughly eighty, eight zero thousand pounds for moving it, and that was if it didn't break when it was lifted from its current position. So, and so, and there's a Historic England issue, so I don't think it's practical, even if it was desirable, and as councillor McCrory says, this is an opportunity to create a real sense of place and a public performance space, which I think that's an opportunity to be grasped. On the subject of zero carbon, and yes, as councillor McCrory says, less traffic and more pedestrians, more cyclists equals a more thriving town city centre. So to that extent, that's an improvement for local businesses as well, and that was mentioned at that cycling conference that you and I attended last year. And just finally, to go back to your first question, is it a priority? Tonight, we're just agreeing to design the scheme. This, we're not deciding to go ahead to actually build the scheme, because you're right, of course, we have got to examine all of our financial situation in review the whole budget in the light of the current financial crisis that all councils are facing as a result of Covid nineteen. So we will return to the subject of budgets at a future cabinet meeting. But councillor Whitehead wanted to come in, I think, on this item.
Only very briefly, Chairman, councillor Watson has said that we fully support it, and of course, that is indeed true. On the report, it shows all the previous things that we've been involved in, and we agree it is the next in line and a very important thing to do. Yes, I'm a member of the Civic Society, and Mr Noble and I, and councillor Madden and so on, have spent many happy hours wandering from top to bottom of that building. And we all, I think, without doubt, want to see it in full use. My only query is, and perhaps councillor McCrory, or you may know, where we are with the actual tenancy of it, because of course, it was intended to be restaurants, so it may not be flavour of the month at the moment, really, to say the least with those. So a lot of this work is design and study, so covering the point that was made earlier on about, should we be spending the money? Well, yes, we're spending it only on design, we're not saying let's do it. But if we do do it, who's going to use it? Do we know?
Yeah, well, I think you and I largely agreed on the subject of that the county councils let this drift for far, far too long. And as you say, in the current situation, it's probably going to drift a bit longer. I and the chief executive had a meeting with the chief executive of Essex, I was trying to remember when it was, just before or just after Christmas. And we put to him the need to be more creative potentially, because they don't appear to have an option B if their current option A doesn't work, which it seems increasingly likely is it won't. And one of the things which I'm keen on, and we offered to the county council, is that could we work with them to put a bid to the Heritage Lottery Fund? Because as you know, this council's been quite successful at getting money out of the H L F, and maybe we could do that and therefore realise the city council's ambition for a more cultural aspect to the proposals. So we haven't lost sight of that point. But obviously, that discussion's for another day, but it hasn't fallen off the agenda.
Thank you for that. I know there was some discussion about forming a trust, so that funds could be indeed obtained separately from the H L F, and maybe that should be taken forward as well.
Yeah, I did speak to councillor Madden about that in February, maybe reviving that idea, but obviously, tonight's decision is, do we go ahead with the design of the pedestrianisation scheme rather than Shire Hall itself, which we'll have to come back to another day?
Yeah, you're right. We entirely support Option One.
Thank you very much. Okay. I don't think there are any other questions. So councillor McCrory, do you want to move the recommendation?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I formally move recommendations one to six.
Colleagues, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Right, so that's seven point three. We're now on to the last item on the agenda, which is item eight, the modern-day slavery statement. Now, as the report says, this is something that all large employers have to produce anyway. And the covering report is relatively short, and in section two points out what we have to put into the statement. So that, the recommendation is obviously that we approve the statement. So turning to the statement itself, this sets out the council's obligations as an employer, but also as a community leader. And it's important in this context that we, you know, we consider our wider responsibilities. And as individuals, we all have a responsibility to watch out for incidences of, which would fit into the definition of modern slavery, which is fairly, fairly broad, and could probably be described in the general sense of safeguarding. And this is about, if anybody was to, if we were to become aware of any of our subcontractors, for example, who were using staff workers who didn't have the right to live in the United Kingdom, or being subjected to unreasonable pressure in their work-life, that they were underage, or that they were being mistreated. So there's a wide range of obligations for us in the broader sense, to look out for people who are working indirectly for us, and then in the wider community, we need to look out in our public representative roles. But this statement is mainly about our responsibilities as an employer, but also when we buy services and goods, and we will work with Essex Police and the other enforcement agencies as appropriate to sharing intelligence and work with those agencies to address these issues. And we have a whole set of policies at the council that will dovetail into this statement and to enable us to deliver our obligations, working with a range of other agencies, from councillors, directors, through the staff of the council, and to carry out training and awareness sessions within the council, particularly for our staff who might be interacting with the public. So this is an important issue. And I'd like to thank councillor Highland for drawing attention to it previously, and I know he wants to speak on this item, so I'll leave it there as the presentation. And councillor Highland, do you want to comment?
Thank you, Chair. Can I just take this moment to publicly thank Chelmsford City Council and the councillors? I want to thank you for unanimously passing the motion I brought before you for this council to sign the Charter Against Modern Day Slavery on the twenty-sixth of February twenty twenty. Can I turn to this statement published for tonight's agenda? Can I welcome the more robust, the more robust statement the council has issued for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one? The statement builds upon previous statements. However, the evidence progress, of progression is less visible. On how we are tackling the risks and incidents of modern-day slavery in our own operations, on proactive monitoring of supply chain delivering for Chelmsford City Council, and the publicity leadership role that the chairman just mentioned, Chelmsford City Council needs to show on raising awareness. and the publicity leadership role that the chairman just mentioned, Chelmsford City Council needs to show on raising awareness. Can I ask that a cross-party and officers task and finish group is considered with a terms of reference to ingrain the Charter Against Modern Day Slavery into this council's working practice? To determine the right metrics to be reported back to this com- council in future statements and to consider a plan to raise awareness and demonstrate Chelmsford City Council's leadership role. Back in February twenty twenty, I said councils are uniquely placed to be at the forefront at the fight against modern day slavery and are demonstrating awareness and ethical leadership by voluntary signing of the Charter Against Modern Day Slavery. This has given us a baseline to build on previous statements, to implement year-on-year improvements and to evidence the progress we are making, tackling the risks and the incidents of modern day slavery in our operations and supply chain. This latest statement simply falls short. This council has more work to do, and I hope you will agree. A cross-party with the officers to have a task and finish working group to help, we can make this change. Thank you, Chair, for allowing me to speak.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you for your support for for what we're doing. Um that, those are uh useful comments. Um I I will take that away and think how best to deal with it. Um I think probably uh if we if we bring um an action plan and we're bringing a report to a future audit and risk committee, uh because that's the that uh that's the uh certainly the committee that covers our procurement function. So I think probably um it, we can bring a report that says how we are going to implement it uh to either the next or the next one meeting. And I would certainly uh welcome your input into the drafting of that report before we actually uh get to the the meeting, um so that we can make sure that it covers all the points that you've just made. So um now, I I think that's I I think rather than set up a new, something new, I think if we get a report to that committee, that's probably the best way to deal with it. And as I, I look forward to your input on that, and I hope that's satisfactory. I'm happy to uh arrange for you to to have a discussion with the relevant officers as as well. Um there will be a report um in December um from officers. Uh but if that's um, if that's not soon enough, uh maybe we can look at something um sooner than that. But we would have been bringing a report in December anyway, so I hope that's satisfactory.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, well, um thank you. Um so um I'm grateful for the support from across the council, for all all the political groups have supported this. Um and as I said in the opening, I think um there is an obligation on all of us uh to look out for things that just don't seem right when we, if we encounter uh other people in in our uh day-to-day roles as councillors and officers. So thank you for for that support. So uh um is the report and the statement a agreed for publication?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Um right, well, um that is the last item on the agenda. There isn't any confidential business um to transact this evening. So um that brings our first ever live online broadcast cabinet meeting to an end. Uh it's something that I welcome. Um it's clear from the broadcasting that um there have been probably more people watching this than um usually come to a cabinet meeting. Um I've hoped they've found it interesting, and there've been quite a few in- items on uh on the agenda to- tonight. Um I hope that councillors from the opposition groups feel that they've been included. Uh that's certainly my intention going forwards. Uh and as I said before, um we do welcome input from the opposition groups to meet with cabinet members and directors in advance of cabinet meetings. Um there's a policy board on Thursday night, which um covers some other issues. Uh so there's quite, and and I'll be appearing for overview and scrutiny, which will be public um on video uh next week as well. So all our meetings are online, um and I welcome participation from the public as well as other councillors. So uh thank you for your attendance uh this evening, uh and good night.
Thank you, Chair.
Bye, bye bye.
Bye.